Anybody discussion on any item on this agenda? And go with the minutes.
Scott with Midwest running. It's not just one meeting. I went, yeah, that's just one meeting.
Who was that?
Scott with Midwest running.
Big day.
Sorry. Hello.
Did that cold air get all the way down to you?
No.
You know, it really wasn't bad. I was kind of amazed.
I left the house at four forty this morning. Mine said eight.
It was pretty cool.
Boys up there said theirs at eight.
Ooh, it was pretty cool for a sun cave.
I have one of those clocks that will project the time and temperature on your wall or on your ceiling wherever you project it. And it didn't like it because it had an asterisk, asterisk there. So I went, it must be cold because it doesn't want to even tell me how cold it is. It does that quite often.
But you know, no wind. We went out looking at the bridge in Winston, Mary. Long time without the bridge. It was bad. Just put just a little bit of wind. By golly, God. Rude the Harley one day and stayed by the fireplace next day.
Yep. Sounded beautiful.
I was gonna see if you won the race the other day.
Yeah, I know. Little car pulled up beside me. I'm making motion on the minutes.
Dang it.
All the favor.
Probably would've won the race.
You know, what's a thing?
Oh. Getting hardly right down to Harley all summer. It's about, finally got it out last day.
What do you think you're at, young gal, you know?
I don't know. That was fifty-five gallons, I bet.
I get in a tote up there. That big Burlington out of Palm Beach, Eddie. Two dollars and fifty cents for the gallon.
Yeah, we get totes of turkey. Carman, they get it from Jones.
I got a tote of little chops up there and they, they made a small sheet and pump it in here. Tote you got out of an enclosed land.
Wish we didn't have to use the crap, boys, to do.
Come here, Dad. I need a, I need a, I need a glass of water.
I've been chopping trees. About to chop up good this morning. It'll be frozen. Now we're getting there.
There's several of them here.
Can you kind of sort, shuffle them around? Eight, twelve?
All day.
Should go ahead. I don't have to sign my real name. I can sign the name of my mom. My real name's Richard Crankin.
That's James. Probably the name she gave me either. Probably can't repeat that.
She just, yeah, she doesn't. She was trying to be nice.
In a new, deeply bright.
She don't wanna make out there like none of us is married. She just doesn't mean it.
Can't yell that when you're in the park. Made one like that in our family. It wasn't me, though. It was the angel child.
And my brother called me one night. He kept, started, kept calling me Richard. About the third time he called me Richard, I said, "What's this Richard crap? That's short for dickhead."
Mark Bradley, boy.
He is.
My brother was smart because he could sit on an ice cream cone and tell you what flavor it was. That's it.
My love there. Jessica was trying to get Trent to...
Uh-oh.
Get him something trouble with his head. She was trying hard. She was showing baby pictures. Zayden was really interested in Lyle and who he looked like and this and that. And so Trent was showing baby pictures of Zayden and pretty soon he showed a picture of Kinsland. Jessica's like, oh, so was it love at first sight when your daughter came out looking like your mother-in-law?
Oh, gosh.
Trent thought long and hard before he answered.
Sure.
Angela wasn't in the room.
I hear other stories that I don't, from him, that I don't believe are true, so.
Oh, that's really...
If he puts her in her place, then I don't believe it.
Yeah. That's what he tried to tell us too. And Jessica's like, yeah.
I think you'd be too scared of her. I'm not too scared of her.
We all are. She's mellowed quite a bit.
They're checking out one now.
Yeah?
Oh, I forgot. You gotta go clean out.
That's right. It's all my stuff. All the mess is all my stuff. That's why I got it cleaned. Once I pick up all my stuff, there ain't much mess left.
The other day, my grandson out there cooking, say, get your socks and stuff and picked up and put it in the dirty laundry. He said, why? Daddy don't. So... Oh, I loved it.
First person you'll smack is daddy.
Yeah, but the time they're late, decide to walk, take an exit from the house.
She probably smiled and gave a grin to that one.
Yeah, he did. Fucking grin.
That's the whole... That's when you love, that's when you love your kids and you're like, they see it. They see it.
See, well, yeah. Love that.
Like, uh, these ministers starting to pick up the term brogue at the end of his sentences.
Thank you for that. There, pull it near.
Cross a lot of keywords. Back home. Mm-hmm. We missed it. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I'll see if they send these back to you.
That Margaret.
Yeah, that's Margaret.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll keep them. Hey, we about found the bottom of that pile. Getting close.
There's another one down here.
Hide one.
Yeah.
I got a little trigger happy. Hold on a second.
Yeah, don't be around me. Hang around a minute.
I'm moving shit in and out of there.
Sir.
I want to play more.
Aye.
They were going to be fast when they cut off. I didn't do them.
My way off to your floor.
I had none turned in. I still have one that's missing, but they didn't turn it down.
Blanket purchase orders.
Those are two. These are one. And there's four. These are kind of collect treasure and sheriff. The only one who's assigned is on top, J and it's kind of general.
And Gork and treasure.
And sheriff. They'll sign those in the top one of them. Kind of general.
I'm moving check the blanket purchase order.
Second.
All the favor.
Aye.
Ghost cough for permit.
Then it's, oh my God. No one in free ones?
It's a private one. No?
No.
Won't get paid though because she's got...
I guess somebody out there wanted to give us money. Somebody out there wanted to give us money. He's probably got a room across it.
I've had a big yours up here also.
He's probably got a room across it.
I'm moving check the road caution from the...
I saw it.
All the favor. Aye. Twenty twenty half of county exit board meeting.
Well... Here we go. Here, there. I'm sorry. Exit size board signed it, but I had a place on there for you guys to sign it. They thought they had it on there on last week's meeting, so... They thought about changing their time, but they went ahead and kept it the same on that first Tuesday after the first Monday at nine o'clock.
I'm moving check the exit board. I'm sorry, schedule. All the favor. Twenty twenty half of county class day off schedule. Twenty twenty, Alfa County Class Day off, schedule.
This one I had quarterly still up the top instead of monthly. The dates are exactly the same, but I went ahead and reprinted it again, just so it says monthly. And then I did not have them in the sheriff's office where we all put it around the table. So, I just put on there that we, it was reprinted and signed as quarterly instead of monthly.
Oh, well, I just remember, I said he gave me that number and I couldn't find it. I got one a little bigger on that. Like when you plug it into your math, you know? So, sorry, thank you so much for your...
Rock, make the motion, sir.
All in favor? Aye. Twenty twenty handbook.
This one I changed to where we have that stated in there that we're only going to print those... We printed twenty twenties, then there'll only be a print of where we change it.
Insert twenty twenties.
Yeah, and we'll print, I'd say. And again, if we need to revise the wording, the county will only print a twenty twenty handbook in full. New hires will receive a handbook after this date and changes only will be printed after this date. And then down where the employee signs, it says, "I further understand this signed statement will be placed in my personal file as a new hire or if changes have occurred."
Paid a lot of paper and a lot of time.
Yeah, yeah. And then, um, I, as I've been thinking about that, we sign this resolution every year and that's all Dusty's wanting. So, then we'll just change, we'll just have this resolution on there that's signed, that we're signing that handbook. And that's the page where you guys sign it. So, yeah, we'll be good. We can still send that to Dusty, that we review it every year. And those changes are given to the employees and new hires will see one every year and we'll just reprint that.
I don't know how many of them get thrown in.
Oh, why? When I was having to print them all, I know when I, it's... Ream after ream after ream of papers, so I mean...
Make the motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Good policy.
Um... My name? Shay, a copy of Dale's that has the color on it and the import. The other chief commissioner also, and here's the entries.
Yeah, I think, uh...
Did you grab one? They just call it their red letter version. I do not have a color copier, so the ones that the employees will sign will not have those unless I come in here to make copies for each officer. Then the officers make the color. But this is just kind of a fast version of what has changed with the medical marijuana. There's a letter on there that is to Dusty and to Dale from Echo's loggers, where they have read it. And they suggested that we make those safety sensitive, um, job descriptions. I gave, I gave one, so...
Hurry's gonna make everybody's...
That would be... Fine for me.
Did you hear Randy ask that? And Dale went, and in this little letter, I think it's this paragraph right here is where Echo right now is stating who is safety sensitive. Again, I, let's just visit...
Oh, that's in there?
Yes.
I'm moving table, it took weeks.
Yeah, let's just visit with Dale and then you guys decide what you want to do. But in this letter, it states that we have job descriptions on those safety sensitive roles.
Yeah, we're gonna have to do every job.
Yep. So, but yeah, let's just, that's what I...
Try to take the easy way out.
I know, I've agreed with you.
You made the motion.
Yeah.
They want the law second.
All in favor?
And another thing he suggested at that meeting last week was to visit with the A District Attorney up to as well, to get some of that.
We don't have it.
Well, that's just what he suggested.
Good suggestion. Alfa County Board should have a visual inspection for Alfa County.
Just sign on here somewhere. Of course, there's no check that's written that just comes out of our kind of general, um, portion, but that is the bill for... The accessory judicial inspection part, uh, for the county. Each school has billed for their portion of the inspection. And, yeah.
Do you have anybody that's got a problem?
No. No.
And Dale says you don't want to know who has one. Because then you're not, you're not keeping an eye, I mean, is that what he said? I mean...
He said, he, his suggestion is you don't want to know.
I know, because you don't want to be oversensitive to watching them or undersensitive to watching them. You're not, you know, showing them partiality or you're not scrutinizing them anymore.
Actually, I've only got three employees, got three, that do not have CDL. Where you can't have, wear a one card and, and have a CDL, so...
Make a motion to accept the portion of visual inspection.
Oh, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
This is just, um, go ahead and...
It's, it's Cano's Board Ban Increase.
We had, I had Dave Nance called and he had, one of his board members for Cano Club had seen that we were looking into changing Internet. And he wanted to know why. And I was, did not print him a pretty picture. I told him how horrible it was. He apologized. He said, "I wish you would have contacted me." So, I made a copy of...
You did try, didn't you?
I tried to contact Darren. I did, and I told him that. And Darren had since had called me also stating that they were just statewide or area-wide, they were down with Cano Club. But I told him, I said, "I will put this on the agenda and let your board member know that you have contacted us." I don't understand the broad, the, the measurement of the broadband, but there was three levels in the courthouse. One was ten, one was forty, and one was a hundred. So, he doubled the bandwidth without any extra charge or anything to see if that will help us out. And I told him, I said, "Since then, knock on wood, I have not..." Now, I noticed a huge decrease in the speed from eight o'clock. I mean, I said, "I'll be working right away." And I said, "As soon as eight o'clock hits," I said, "the speed drops down." And he did agree. He said, "I will agree with Dobson until we get a designated line coming in here, we're gonna continue to have that problem." But he hopes increasing that broadband amount, that we don't notice it as much.
And I think I know who the board member is, because Brad Riggs is chairman of the board. And I did have a visit with him about it.
And he, and he, he said, but I mean, he gave me our contact information. He says, "Give it to every office." So, I, I went to every office in the courthouse and gave him, you know, I said, "If you have problems, please notify him." And he says, "Please notify me as soon as you guys have any problems." And I said, "Okay." And he did not ask for it to be put on the agenda, but I told him, I said, "I'm gonna put it on the agenda." So, it does go in the paper that Cano Club has, you know, tried to do everything that they could to help us until we go with a designated line. And he said, "That, that will be a huge increase if we go to that." He says, "But he thinks that increasing the broadband width will help us enough that maybe we won't have to go to that."
We don't need to take any action.
No, no, I was, yeah, I took it all myself, yeah. I'm sticking up on myself to put that on there, just so then you guys know that they have reached out. Darren, um, uh, I cannot remember Darren's last name. He had contacted me afterwards via when he got caught up with everything, when they were having huge problems. And he said, let me, and he says, "I don't know what caused it. I don't know why it's slowing down." And so this young man reached out last weekend.
Yeah, maybe you wake him up a little.
Yep. I hope it helps. I mean, I said, "I haven't, I haven't noticed it, but..."
The FEMA documentation, this is our, our local agreement. Basically, what it is, we gotta sign, and there are two of these actually to sign.
For each disaster.
And so we can get paid. They're ready to start paying us some money.
And here's another set, if you want them signed, so we both have originals, just to send a set up. Here's another one, two.
You gotta sign all of them?
Well, she needs originals and I need originals, so...
Give one paper, sign it.
Well, the first two are, if you want to point someone else. But I believe if you just sign that third one where you're the authorized person, you see it? No, it's on the same page, Shay.
Right here, where it's...
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that...
Oh, yeah, that's if you want to point somebody else to do it.
So, that's up to you, but I think just that signature there is sufficient. And then Nancy will have to notarize all four.
Do we do it right now?
One we're supposed to notarize, that's one's gonna sign it on.
And when I spoke to Luke, uh, he's with OEM, he said, "There's one payment that's ready to be, to be dispersed once we get this paperwork up." On the disaster.
Martin, do you have any of the roads that's got any federal money on it?
Oh, well, I got it, bred.
I was telling Stan this morning, they're telling us some old dog. Everything's turned in. Old Doc sends it to the state, state sends it to the federal, the federal sends it back to the state. And he said, "It's five years to up before you're gonna get any money out of state." And so, and we've got several roads up there that federal money was spent on back in the thirties and...
Oh, well, we probably do.
We've got, we got a running through that way. FEMA won't pay on that, it's gotta go through the...
They've never brought anything up.
Good, maybe you don't. Don't mention it.
No, I ain't gonna do it. But about ready to start fixing the roads, be done with it.
We got a good guy this last week. Set eleven locations in two hours' time. Easily do it.
Well, I'll, I'll say on camera, public, FEMA is a four-letter word.
Yeah.
Didn't mean to upset you.
I know you did.
Talking about four-letter words.
I'm moving ship, the...
Second.
For payment. All in favor? Aye. Dobson Technology, agreement with the OSU Standing Election Board and the...
There's three places for initials. I mean, this is just their local interstate toll calls and then the interstate and international calls and then the signature on the bottom, Shay. And this will actually get them to where they start the two-week process. And this has been my holdup, I'm sorry. I've been in and out so much the past two weeks that I dropped the ball and no, it's not on the agenda.
I'm moving ship, the arena.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any other for scene business, move with urine. Also get that. All in favor?
You didn't give anybody time to talk, Jay.
You got it.